All right, I call the October tenth, two thousand twenty-three Colonial School Board Meeting to order. Please rise as Ron Handy leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, moving on to additions or corrections to the board agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have none at this. I have none at this time.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Laws, seconded by Mr. Dorsey. Are there any questions or comments from the board? All right, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right. Motion approved. All right, and now moving on to the next agenda item is We Got Talent. Dr. Menzer?
Yes, Mr. PQ, board members were fortunate this evening to get a little bit of our Ag talent here. In the back of the room, we have Ms. Hawkins, Colonial Ag teacher. And we're going to turn it over to her, and then we're going to experience a little bit of the State Fair in Newcastle, I think. Go ahead, Ms. Hawkins.
Good evening, I wasn't prepared to speak. I'm Ms. Hawkins, and I do plant science and ag here at Penn. I have a couple of our students that won first place at our state level competition for their agri-science fair research projects. So they're here to talk about a little bit of their projects. I also have a couple of their officers that are going to explain some items from the summer that they did at the State Fair, as well as some of our, for our big debut in the National FFA magazine, since we were their feature cover story for the fall/winter issue.
So can we not walk around here?
Yeah, please come around, they're prepared to talk. Ask them lots of questions, they've been prepped for it. Yeah, please come and look in and listen. Their projects took a long time. When I say pages of research and time was dedicated, this is not an overnight project. These kids worked for months on these projects. They had to win at a state level, they recently competed at a regional level, and they've already gotten their results for the national level. We'll be traveling to Indianapolis at the end of the month, and that's their reward for winning the state.
Hello, how are you? My name is Sanaya.
Oh, yeah.
Good, how are you? I'm doing good. So my presentation was on preventing food waste through education. I felt that food waste was a big problem in America, and food waste, food waste about like eighty billion tons yearly in America, and we're the top of the population, like, we're the youngest. So I thought that if we could, if we could teach the younger generation, how to, how to.
You give thanks. Pride. Industrious.
By a big, big, big majority. So right here was some of the drawings that I.
American signage, so very familiar with the language. However, when I was researching this.
I asked them, do they know how to preserve food?
The ingredients that are very different.
Most of the kids said no, had no idea.
So have literally, so what made you get involved with agriculture?
So I've always enjoyed Ag, but when I had Ms. Hawkins's class, I loved it. I got involved, I went on a lot of field trips. And the idea for this project, doing this agri-science fair project in general, came and was presented to me by her, so she, she had the idea for me to do an agri-science fair project, and that was at the FFA state convention.
So I found interest in that topic, and so I was.
For non-Ag.
Because Ag people are going to want.
Oh, my God, I'm scared.
So what do you, do you have?
What do we got here, gentlemen?
So this is actually not my project, but it's from my closest friends' project.
Okay, so what are you up here for?
I'm up here for championing the Ag, my expertise, which is nice.
So this is you?
Great.
No, it's really good, because that's like.
So you have chickens?
I had chickens, I don't have them anymore.
What happened to them?
They're dead.
Our service, that's hard. I don't know.
I had to present up on this rock, which was preferred, I chose to throw that rock, which Eve has a second.
Oh, they're not registered. So we're being. I don't think so. But I'm pretty sure, kids have asked.
I was listening, no, I was listening.
I want to stumble on something personal.
She, she put that in a sound barrier. She put that in a sound, she's going to do an extension, um, for this year, and reenter, and see if she's going to have fun.
I'm really, I'm really fascinated, is that going further than my parents just saying how well they're.
Well, it's like, why they, why they make that, like, doing, why, like, how can we use that more better? Like, the sound barrier, like, that's on a plant, certain trees. She wants to go into that.
People think that's what I'm talking about, that I'm talking about.
And his projects are just, they're down, I would say, although, he said, I'm a seventy percent hairdo. And I'm not too hard, and so I have a, like, that, when I use a project, like, my hair is, it's problematic. You know what, project.
You have the personal, like, your personal, which is what creates careers. When you start creating your personal. It's bringing it up, it's something that happens. Different act. Something I want to do better, because you don't offer, like, school paper, where you assign, like, science and philosophy.
And so his, 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 his patient, I think, looks like maybe emerging.
That's how I knew, people see, they see a light, and it's okay, it's a new way that I can feel.
She had first kids in the region? Yes.
We have four.
Talk a lot. And she completely. Mister Napoleon. Yeah, my daughter, she's already, she's been, um, practicing on Sundays, but, uh, yeah, she's in second grade.
Thursday, right?
He's like, when you gotta bring her her apple. I was like, get out of here.
So, first off, just saying, thank you so much for taking a little bit of time to share fascinating presentations and conversations going on. This makes me excited for Thursday, eighth grade Penn Farm Day. Eighth graders come to Penn Farm and basically have a lot of fun, doing a lot of cool things, both on the farm, as well as out back here with the chickens, the greenhouse, the koi fish, the angry duck that's back there. Is it someone's? He's yelling. He is angry, always yelling at people.
I bet there's a board member.
Hopefully, he's better behaved for the eighth graders, but, um, and thank you so much. I know the Fall Festival is going to be a big opportunity for you guys to try to push some pumpkins, so I know there's probably some pumpkins laying around out back as well.
We are selling out.
Yes.
So do you need pumpkins? We just hang the out.
All right, there you go, Penn Farm, everybody.
What did you guys say to the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Do you have anything else after that, or? All right. All right, next agenda item is Who We Are, and which comprises of our student and staff recognition. Turn the mic over to Ms. Lauren Wilson, our public information officer.
Good evening, Superintendent Menzer, and all of you board members, and everyone here from Colonial Nation. Tonight, we're going to begin our student recognitions with Ian Robinson. Over the summer, Ian Robinson, a sixth grader at Gunning Bedford, submitted an entry to One United Bank's I Got Bank Financial Literacy Contest. He had to read the book, I Got Bank, which was written by the bank president, and submit either an essay or artwork for consideration about what he learned about financial literacy. His essay submission was a winner. We are proud to announce that he won a one thousand dollar savings account with the bank, which is one of the few Black-owned banks in the United States, and we believe Ian is the first winner from the state of Delaware. Colonial Nation is proud of this young man's initiative, and that is why he is among those to be featured in our social media cap, platform called Who We Are. Congratulations, Ian.
Scoot over a little bit, that's good. All right, I mean, three, two, one. Good, thank you.
Next, the National College Board has recognized two William Penn students because of their GPA, which is three point five or higher, and for their outstanding performance on the PSAT or AP exams. Both can now list this honor on applications as standouts when they apply to colleges. Foliesheo Kohende was awarded the National African-American Recognition Award, while Sergio Herrera received the National Hispanic Recognition Award. Both of the students earned the National Rural and Small Town Award. Colonial Nation is proud of these bright scholars for representing Who We Are.
Move this way for me, guys, scoot over this way. Thank you very much. All right. Go. Three, two. Go ahead, bro.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Up next is a student who knew the right thing to do and was rewarded for his efforts. Julian Thompson is a fifth grade student at Wilmington Manor. While playing in the woods near his home, Julian spotted a box filled with surveying equipment valued at fifteen hundred dollars that had been stolen from a work site. He alerted his father, and then, with the help of his dad and grandmother, they searched the internet until they found Whickersham Construction. The company had been working on a water treatment plant project in Wilmington Manor Gardens, where the thieves made off with several pieces of equipment. The owner of the company was so impressed with Julian that he wrote a letter to Principal Lindsay D'Amidio saying, quoting now, "One of your students performed an incredible act of kindness, and our team at Whickersham Construction would like to recognize his honor and integrity." Julian received a fifty-dollar gift card and some of the company's swag, along with twenty-one-dollar gold coins from the project manager's personal collection. We agree, Julian deserves to be recognized, and that is why he too is included in our social media campaign for representing Who We Are. Would you like the family to come forward and get a picture along with Principal?
Go ahead, guys, go ahead. Yeah, everybody come forward. Oh, let's get one more.
Go ahead. Dinner.
Sure.
Congratulations. Moving on to staff. We are excited that Wilbur Elementary School's own Dr. Dani Asmus has been chosen as one of the National Education Association's Global Fellows for two thousand twenty-four. As one of forty-eight public school educators, she will participate in a two-day professional development conference this month, and a ten-day international field study in Costa Rica next summer. The field study allows educators to investigate the historical and cultural context of the country they visit, and to learn about its educational system through meetings with policymakers, businesses, and nonprofit leaders, as well as visits to schools, and to meet teachers, students, and administrators. The two thousand twenty-four fellows represent the depth and breadth of the teaching profession in urban, rural, and suburban communities. We applaud Dr. Asmus for representing Who We Are.
Thank you.
That concludes our recognitions for tonight.
You did forget one, Ms. Wilson, I'm sorry, I have one. So every month, as the superintendent of district, I go out and recognize one staff member who goes above to change the odds for students. So tonight, I am going to recognize Mr. Gabe Phillips. So what you get though, is that, Gabe is the man behind the Power We brand. Everything you see on social media, everything you saw with field dedications, you name it, Gabe is part of it to make this school district shine across the state, and I would dare say across the tri-state region and country. And so what I've been doing is, is I recognize each staff member, and they get a framed picture of a William Penn statue from the city of Newcastle, changing the odds, and then a famous, just a popular William Penn quote here. And so tonight, because Gabe has been rocking it out quietly, quietly. In fact, this weekend, he comes, after this weekend, which was awesome, great field hockey field dedication to Miss Bianchini, awesome event at the IBEW for all the honorees who are getting facilities named. Despite deciding to bag the Homecoming Fall Festival, which we let it roll down. Awesome Homecoming tailgates from all the alumni that were here, amazing field dedication for Bruce Reynolds, just spectacular. The first thing he does is come in and say, hey, we got to recognize some people who really helped out with that event. Well, I'mma tell you, it wouldn't have happened if Gabe wasn't a part of it. Thank you. See, I can do it too. Too complacent. All right, now we're going.
All right, thank you, and I want to just say personally, for me, it's very hard to explain how much Gabe means to this district, and how much he truly, from the bottom of his heart, believes in the Power of We and reinvesting in this community. And, uh, thank you for that, Gabe. It is.
Thank you.
Well-deserved for you to be recognized for that, so thank you again.
And I would add that I watched you running, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, uh, at the, you know, at the game, and I knew, I know you probably ran Friday night, you ran Thursday, so thank you.
Yes. Good. All right, real quick, um, now with all the recognition, moving on to some of the more formal stuff. Uh, we're going to pause for a moment to allow, pause the meeting to allow families, students, and staff that need to leave and go home to do that.
For homework and any of the other things and children's, sorry, but.
No problem, thanks.
Sorry.
All right, all of you plan to be here for the balloon hole now, all right? All right, let's move on over to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Don't, no public comment, this is.
Okay. All right, and, uh, let's move past, all right, and consent agenda? All right, and then moving over to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So, second.
All right, moved by Mrs. Smith, seconded by Mr. Laws. Uh, do I have any questions or comments from the board? Nope. All right, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right. Consent is approved. All right, and then moving on to updates and action items. Dr. Menzer?
Yeah, first up this evening, we have a presentation from our curriculum instruction division on leadership and learning, specifically a focus on elementary reading program and dibbles. Uh, I'm going to turn the show over to Ms. Gatauski, supervisor of curriculum instruction, who's gonna walk us through some, uh, displays and activities here over the next several minutes. Remember, Mrs. Gatauski, right? Gabe Gatauski over here, she's been here before.
Am I ready?
Yeah, you're up, you're up.
I feel like I need that, that song, like, "They see me rolling," and it's good, I need some music.
Gabe, I'm going to put the award back.
Just getting a little workout. All right. I'm going to actually turn it. Is that okay?
Yes.
Good, good. Trying to figure out the best way to present this, because I do have some materials, and I feel bad turning it, so I'm going to probably go like this, if that's okay with everybody.
Oh, good.
All right, good. I do have a folder for everyone. How are you? Hi. Thank you. Yep. All right. Oh, the microphone. Oh, no, it's okay, thank you. All right, good evening, how's everybody doing? Good? Yeah. Um, my name is Katie Gatauski, and I've had the privilege to speak to you, I think, at least once or twice a year. Last year, I presented some early literacy data, and, um, I was able to share some exciting adventures we have moving forward. So we just recently adopted CKLA, which is our Core Knowledge Language Arts Program, and, uh, really excited to share what year one looks like, and some data connected to year one. So in your folders, on the left-hand side, you should see a data sheet, looks just like this. All right, so we have much to celebrate. Um, year one, if anything, could be scary, challenges, the unknown, is this the right fit? How do we make this work? Um, and I think the data speaks for itself. So if you look on the left-hand side, we assess our students every single year at the beginning of the year with what's called Dibbles Screener. So Dibbles is a, um, subskill assessment that really analyzes and assesses the early literacy skills of our youngest readers. So do they know what sounds are? Do they know their letter names? Um, can they break words apart? I don't know, how many of you remember the Hegarty? Um, videos of the chopping and the sounds? So we're really monitoring, assessing all of those things, can our kids do those things? So when you look at the composite score of our kindergarten students, at the beginning of the year, before we even launched CKLA, what did our students know? What could they do? So twenty-three percent of the students were proficient according to some of those skills. At the end of the year, after year one implementation of CKLA and the amazing work and efforts of our kindergarten teachers, we were at fifty-six percent proficiency. So we had an increase of thirty-three percent growth, which is just phenomenal. So not only were we starting the school year with brand-new students, five-year-olds coming to school for the very first time, we also were implementing something new, and we were seeing an amazing impact and effect from that. Moving on, you'll see first grade, we started the year off at thirty-two percent proficient, and we grew to forty-nine percent proficiency, so again, great growth there in first grade with a seventeen percent increase. And then second grade, we were at thirty-six percent proficiency at the beginning of the year, so right around this time of year. And then at the end of the year, we were up to forty-three percent proficiency, so another great gain there of seven percent proficiency. If you look at that bottom half of the sheets, we're not just measuring proficiency scores, something that we really pride ourselves in here in Colonial, and in the work that our teachers do, is growing our students. So, okay, here's our baseline data, now what are we going to do about that? We're going to take our implementation materials, we're going to take our resources, we're going to support our students. How are we growing? How are we minimizing our most at-risk students? And you can see how our teachers did just that. At the beginning of the year in kindergarten, sixty percent of our students were at risk, meaning they needed some support in those early literacy skills. At the end of the year, we minimized that to only twenty-nine percent, which really sets our first-grade teachers up and their first-grade experiences in a really good spot, more positively. So we reduced that by thirty-one percent. In first grade, we had fifty-three percent at our most intense level, and we minimized that to thirty-four percent, so another excellent, um, increase or reduction of intensive scores. And then in second grade, we were at fifty-two percent at the beginning of the year, and at the end of the year, we landed at thirty-nine percent. So another good positive trend with our most intense students. So we utilized interventions, we supported our students with the skills they needed to kind of close those gaps. So you're hearing me talk about dibbles, what is dibbles? What are you talking about? So I'm going to actually, um, model and put Dr. Menzer to the test. Do you think he can do it? Will he score most intense? What supports will I need to provide him?
I take offense to that, Mr. D'Amidio.
On the left-hand side, you also.
I am nervous, Sally.
On the left-hand side, you also see, if you don't mind I grab this, um, I just wanted to print off a few samples for you, again, for, um, the validity of the test. I just wanted to give you one progress monitoring, so that, you know, you can see what the students might experience. We assess our kindergarten students for tonight, I'm going to focus on kindergarten, our kindergarten students in lettering fluency, so within a minute, how fast can they name their letter sounds? I'm going to give Dr. Menzer a word, and I'm going to ask Dr. Menzer to break that word apart for me and tell me all the sounds he hears in that word, and maybe hit his brain when he's done. And then I'm going to have, typically, would have our students read what we would call sight words or irregular words. Um, so the, it, of, at, words like that. And then our last assessment, subskill assessment, is called nonsense word fluency. And this is where, in the beginning of the year, for our kindergarten students. And this is where, in the beginning of the year, for our kindergarten students, we don't necessarily give them a score for this, because this is a very, very, um, it's a skill that's introduced after you've got some sound-to-symbol connection and correlation between mm and the letter m, and you can blend those sounds together. So, are you ready?
I think so. This isn't what you said I was gonna do.
I know, I know. I bullied him into this. I did, I did.
Blindly, probably blindly. Go ahead.
All right, Dr. Menzer, I'm gonna say a word, and after I say it, you tell me all the sounds you hear in the word, okay? So, if I say at, you would say at. All right, so can we do one together?
Please.
All right, let's try. Tell me the sounds in it.
It.
Excellent. Yes! This is gonna go great. This is gonna go great. Very good. The sounds in it are it. So, typically, a teacher would then proceed, they set a one-minute timer. We actually leverage Amplify CKLA, which is our online testing platform for M-class, and it automatically times us. So, we don't have to worry about fumbling with a timer, we don't have to worry about using a paper pencil, fumbling through our pages. We just use either a Chromebook, touchpad, an iPad, or our computers. Thirty seconds, can you give it to me? Thirty seconds? Yeah, thirty seconds. Ready? Tell me all the sounds you hear in her. No. That wasn't the incorrect, no, is it? No. What sounds you hear in the word, no? Four.
Or.
Day. All.
All.
In.
In.
Okay, good. So, Dr. Menzer, thank you so much for modeling that for me. So, here's what's hard. Here's what Dr. Menzer did, and he didn't even realize it. He knows how to spell the word, and he was trying to sound out some of the spellings, like her, huh, er. Just two sounds. Uh, er, because he knows how to spell her. So, sometimes it's a little bit more difficult. So, I- There you go. Yeah, yeah. So, this is what our kindergarten students experience, right? And our first-grade students and our second-grade students. So, just wanted to kind of give you a glimpse. Yeah, it's a little more graphic, and it is, it is. But I think it also speaks to how well our students progress through the year as we have these benchmarks and these screeners, and the supports that they receive. So, I'm gonna shift gears, because from that one subskill and what you just experienced, it is woven all throughout our curriculum, okay? So, I've got the Scarborough's reading rope over there. This is an image you have seen before. If you were to have any type of science of reading, PD, any type of webinar, this will get referenced, okay? As I've mentioned before, reading is rocket science. It is not natural, and there are many, many layers and, um, strings associated to it. So, we're gonna go through a couple of those strings tonight, and Emily, if you don't mind, just put in a stack up. And I do want to shout out, I do have some amazing kindergarten teacher leaders who decided to join me. This is Emily Mallon, her Eisenberg, kindergarten teacher. Um, Amy Philippin, kindergarten teacher. We invited some other friends that weren't able to make it, but I feel like they're on the Zoom, so shout out for watching. I'm sure you're taking care of the kiddos. We have our district coach, Rachel Alman, over there, who's also extremely supportive in the rollout and implementation of CKLA. So, if I'm gonna invite Emily up, she's gonna kind of help my vanna, because we've got the microphone and some resources here. All right, so, we have not abandoned Hegarty. All right, last year again, we saw some videos, we practiced implementation of Hegarty. Hegarty really supports those phonemic awareness skills, a lot of the segmenting, blending, rhyming. Our teachers begged to keep this. After implementation of CKLA, it wasn't because CKLA was lacking something, it just created another tool, another resource to support our students in that early developmental stage of sound-to-symbol, um, and sound manipulation, I should say. So, this is still here to stay. I actually just received an email on Friday from a teacher thanking me for this tool and this resource, and how it has really contributed to, um, some supports and systems in the classroom. So, that was exciting. But we're gonna get into CKLA. So, Emily's gonna hold up an image card, and what you would see in the classroom, if we were to leverage and really address some early literacy skills here. Emily, right, so, we're going to segment that picture. The picture is fish, okay? So, f, i, sh. And then you might ask, what's that word? And the kids would have to blend that together to identify, uh, identify the word, or I'm sorry, the image fish, right? And so, Emily, if you could just share your quick experience around, um, low-floor, high-ceiling approach to supporting all students through this.
Yeah, so like Katie said, these image cards are utilized, um, really early on in CKLA. So, right now, we're utilizing them in the classroom, um, to support students' ability to blend the sounds. So, like Katie said, the students will hear the sounds. So, for instance, if I was doing it in this, the classroom, I would say the sounds are i, sh, just like she said. And then there's a couple of visual supports. The students can utilize the visual supports if they need for assistance with blending, but they don't have to utilize it. So, it kind of is embedded, those differentiation through the visual. And it also encourages students to use hand motions. So, the students, when I give them the sounds, you'll see if you're in the classroom, all the students are going like this, and the teacher. So, students are identifying the first sound by touching their shoulder, just the middle sound by touching their elbow, and the ending sound by touching the wrist. So, it really just brings in the visual sport, visual support as well as the kinesthetic, uh, movement to kind of reach all students and all learners. And the kids absolutely love it. They love the visuals, and it brings in some different vocabulary words. Some of them are, um, pictures that they have seen, some of them could be something that is different, or different words for the image that's on the card. So, the students absolutely love it, and it just provides different supports, um, for various students. So, then, the next piece that we were gonna kind of go through with you is, at this point in the school year, there's a lot of that, right? Skills one and two in kindergarten are very heavy into oral language production, listening for sounds, as well as left-to-right progression, lines, diagonals, um, things of that nature. So, those are really important prerequisite skills in learning to read. Emily mentioned the segmenting of i. Eventually, that will lead to the encoding, which is the spelling. If they can hear those sounds and spread them out and identify the beginning, middle, and end, it then correlates to the writing. This is where we will be getting and going in kindergarten first grade and second grade, right? Very much connected to sound-to-symbol connection as we progress throughout the curriculum. I'm gonna hand this to you, Ms. Smith. Take a look at that. What do you notice in the Skills Two workbook? What are you noticing?
A lot of pictures.
Yep, lots of pictures.
Lots of pictures. And, and almost some graphs.
Yep, so graphs, diagonal lines, yep. X's, T's.
Right.
Some squiggly lines. Again, we're really working on those fine motor skills. So, our OTs in the district love this part, right? Because usually, we jump right to, hey, here's a letter, here's the sound. Thank you, Ms. Smith. They're really working on that, that formation, uh, because we have to have solid, um, foundational skills in our handwriting and those motions to kind of continue and leverage. That capacity of the brain needs to be freed up to learn to read, right? So, we can't be struggling with our handwriting, our left-to-right. We have to really make sure that we're utilizing our brain space, our brain power, to learn the code and to read and comprehend. So, that's kind of where we start here in kindergarten, and that's where Emily and Amy are living right now in their instruction. They will eventually, in Skills Three, get to the actual letters, um, identification of the letters, the spelling to the symbol. And so, I'm gonna stop talking for just a second and let you kind of take a look at the workbook that Emily is- They're still tracing, but now they have the skills that they're able to form the letters. So, that's actually important that they work on the pre-writing strokes, so that now they are able to form the letters correctly once they learn the sounds and the lettering. So, like Katie said, they don't have to focus on, you know, using their brain power to figure out how to write it and use their primary strength. They can just really focus on the letter and sound correspondence. And so, that's now, and you're probably like, so what does it look like at the end? How did we get to fifty-six percent at the end of the year? So, Emily's now gonna walk by with the very last skills book in that unit, in the, in the year, and what you'll see our kindergarten students producing at the end of the year. Then this is using some vocabulary and writing sentences. So, again, they're still working on that fine motor, but now they're increasing to writing words and sentences, where they came from pre-writing strokes all the way at the beginning. Here, they're spelling in words, so different variations of writing words and sentences. And so, as we progress throughout the year, the code and the exposure to the code, which is the sound-to-symbol code, continues to increase. So, at this point, if you would like to, I invite you to come up and peruse some of our student readers. So, again, here is one of our first picture readers that the kids get so excited about, right? I know Emily and Amy are like, the kids are like, we have a book, we have a book, this is amazing. But it's just the simple tricky, it's the tricky words. So, it's a lot of, again, imagery, tricky words. Okay, so here's the beginning parts of the learning to read, lots of exposure. Yeah, please, that would be great. Trying to figure out what the best approaches here.
Are these part of the two?
This is not. Yep, so we're gonna get to that. So, if you look on the back of the book, you'll be able to see what skill unit it is. So, I'd love for everyone to see what Kit, what Kit learns. What's Kit doing, Ms. Age?
Kit's running.
Kit's running. Okay. Very basic sentence structure, though, three words, first sentence, Kit can run. Who's got Scott? What's Scott doing?
I have.
What Scott is doing a lot at the end of the year.
Well, he's, they're digging in the sand and going on a plane ride and, uh, having a snack stand.
All right, so I'm gonna pause you right there, Ms. Smith. So, we started with Kit. What was Kit doing? Kit was?
Ran and got sand.
Ran and got sand. Okay, so CVC, when we're talking about those real simple, early learning skills, those shorter words. Then at the end, we've got Scott digging, multi-syllabic, in the sand, right? We've got some, some blends, we've got some different components and phonetic skills in that text. So, we're really working our way up the trajectory there of learning to read and exposure to the skills. Every student has these books. There is a reading opportunity every day when you utilize CKLA. It's the application piece. That application piece is crucial and key in learning to read. So, not only are teachers rock stars in modeling, explicitly teaching the skill, they're also allowing time and space for our kids to practice and apply their skills. Did you want to add anything, Amy? Okay. I love the support. We're getting closer. She's getting closer, guys. And Amy, can you, can you tell, how long have you been teaching, Amy?
Uh, twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years, right.
Kindergarten, all twenty-four.
All colonial.
Anything else to add? Questions to Amy? All right, we're gonna transition real quickly to, um, some knowledge, because it's not just about the skills. As right over Amy's shoulder in Scarborough's reading rope, right? The word rec piece is crucial. It is crucial in our early literacy years in K one, two. And it's also crucial in three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, right? Our kids need to learn those skills in order to be a skilled reader, but we can't forget about our language comprehension. And so, we think about language comprehension in kindergarten. It's a lot of oral language development, it's a lot of listening comprehension. Our teachers and our, the content and topics that they're exposed to are just amazing. Right now, your kindergarten students in Colonial are learning about the five senses. So, here, touch, smell, see. Taste, thank you, thank you. I need to go into a classroom clearly right now. Um, but this is just one example of the vocabulary the kids are exposed to through this topic, through this concept. So, it's, it's very scientific. We're using scientific vocabulary. The, the knowledge that they're gaining, although they're not reading it, their listening knowledge, they're making connections, the vocabulary, the world, they're gonna be able to take that into conversations they have with their families, with their siblings, with their friends. And it does happen, right, Mr. Medio?
Sure does.
Mr. Medio, do you want to quickly tell your story with the parent who called regarding the, didn't you have a parent call about the, um, clavicle? I'm putting you on the spot, but I remember it, because it was that powerful for me. She called a parent, and the parent, about something totally unrelated, and she said, Katie, you'll never believe this. The mom that just said, oh my God, my son's using the word clavicle, because, thank you, yay! And, and just the use of vocabulary at home is just, I, I feel like it's super powerful.
The vocabulary, no, and I think I just talked to Dr. Menzer about this recently. It's like, the words that these kindergarten first and second graders are saying is like Mesopotamia, like, oh, okay. Like, and they're, yeah, like, they're learning that in this curriculum. It's pretty incredible.
Yeah, so it's, it's very, very exciting. And then just to add to that, we also have some additional read-alouts and supports, one of the units in, um, kindergarten's Kings and Queens. And so, we wanted to make sure that we were representing all groups and, um, identifying Kings and Queens from various cultures. And then we just have some knowledge workbooks, if you're interested, take a look at that, because we can't just focus on one layer of the rope. We really have to focus on both. And while DIBELS really just contributes to that one layer, right, that's our early skills literacy, it also contributes to the other aspects of what they're learning in kindergarten.
What's, what's your pacing through the skill development?
Yeah, so we follow CKLA's pacing. Um, it varies, right? So, it varies based upon unit and skill. I feel like in the beginning of the year, it's a little bit faster paced. Correct me if I'm wrong, like-
Yeah, it depends.
Twelve days, fifteen days. We have a district pacing calendar, yeah. So, we have a district pacing calendar. Um, there are adjustments made, school to school or classroom to classroom. So, I can speak to this, and it's not K two, and Dani Asmus is actually here. Our intensive four-five program, we are launching and, uh, we are moving into CKLA in year one in grades three, four, and five. Um, our intensive program of four-five, they're using CKLA as well. That's their tier-one program, but they're just modifying the pacing a little bit. So, there could be some modifications in pacing based upon program needs, supports. But they're still experiencing that tier-one core content and curriculum. Yeah. Yeah. And the pacing allows for, there's different pausing points, which allows, um, different classrooms and grade levels to kind of utilize them as needed. So, say a teacher feels like there's an area that their students are really struggling in, there are those built-in, what they call pause point days, to allow for remediation and reteaching. So, those are already built in. And there's also different things in the program, um, that teachers can utilize for like small group instruction and intervention. So, it can provide various opportunities for reteaching and, you know, changing, um, what that looks like in small groups as needed for the students. So, I just want to reiterate, though. I'm saying if you're talking about CKLA, but I can't not praise and talk about our staff, our teachers, our literacy coaches, and the people that are in the schools doing the work, right? Anybody can have high-quality instructional materials. We can have the best program in the world, but it's only gonna work if the students feel loved, right? Love, love is a thing. They feel safe. They're in an amazing culture, climate, and community that the students can teach them. That comes first. And it's something that's very important to name, is that this program would be nothing, those scores would be nothing without the teachers. And so, I think it's really important to say, people over programs, people first, because without Amy, without Emily, and the other kindergarten teachers and support staff and parents who do this day in and day out, we wouldn't have the outcomes that we have. So, we can give all the PD in the world, we can give them the best resources and materials, but it really starts with them. And so, I feel like we should definitely applaud our teachers here for all that they do. But it's not easy to go by your, coming in, the routines, procedures, all the things. So, lots of kissing the brain and, um, lots of hugs, but, um, we're really excited for, for what year two brings, right? So, we're not stopping. We're gonna continue year two. We are gonna continue to dig deep into these early literacy skills, analyze our data, set some targets around the data that we have currently, and, um, support three, four, five and year one implementation. So. Any, oh, I almost forgot, my culminating on the right side. Yes, Dr. Menzer has it. I hope everyone's excited. On the right-hand side, I provided you with a bookmark, and you might notice some similarities here between what you see on the back of your bookmark and Scarborough's reading rope. And so, right now, those ropes might be separated, but what I'd like you to do is I want you to just carefully twist them together. I see Ms. Hutton already doing it. Just twist them together. If you need some help, I'm happy to assist. And I just want you to remember the importance and the connection that every single day in your classrooms in Colonial, in these classrooms in Colonial, we are weaving those ropes together, we are tightening those strings, we are closing the gaps, we are making sure they are not frayed, and we are connecting and we are creating skilled readers. And so, I hope that you make a nice knot at the end. I'll help you if you need help. And you take that as a remembrance, either wear it, put it on a keychain, put it on a bookbag. And you take that as a remembrance, either wear it, put it on a keychain, put it on a bookbag. Of all the good things happening in Colonial to increase learning and literacy outcomes.
Not. I'm sorry, I can't get that out of my head.
Try Scarborough, Scarborough.
Oh, no.
All right, at this time, do you guys have any questions for us, for the teachers? Yes.
Can you test Dr. Menzer again next time?
Next month is non-sense word fluency, that one should be fun.
Okay, seriously.
Are we doing any of this, giving the kids a pre-kindergarten, any exposure to any of this?
I love that question. So part of our strategic plan actually is we are now including pre-K in our phonemic awareness work and our exercises. So we recently purchased Hegarty pre-K. We had an opportunity, Rachel was with me, another literacy coach, Shay Pankowski, we had the opportunity to meet with the pre-K program, over sixty-plus teachers, paras, teachers, administrators. We trained them on Hegarty. So they have embraced, adopted, and are now using Hegarty as a resource in our pre-K classrooms. I recently went in to help assist with some pre-assessing and just kind of get to know the kids, and they blew me away. They blew me away with what they already know. Like, we assume pre-K, they don't, oh, this is a lot. They knew their letters, they knew their sounds. And if they didn't know how to articulate it, they still knew it, because they provided visual or verbal cues that was able to share that. So pre-K is a part of our work moving forward, and we're starting with phonemic awareness.
So two questions, one with some of the data that you have.
Yeah.
Where we compare beginning of the year to year end.
Yep.
Do you have any data from, or is it mapped to compare year end to beginning of the next school year using the previous year's, you know, goals?
I do have that, I just don't have that readily.
To show summer losses, you know, or if there is any, or improvement or anything.
Yes, I do have that, and I actually, Ms. Clark over there, Sherry Clark, she is our director of CNI, and she and I were just kind of digging into some of that data, and we had some celebrations. I don't have it readily available, but I will definitely get that to you.
You can email her.
Because there are, there are celebrations, we're excited about that. And to that point, I also wanted to name, I wanted to make sure that, because I figured somebody would ask this, so I got nervous, I wanted to make sure I was prepared. Where were we last year in comparison, right? So this year, we ended the year in kindergarten at fifty-six percent proficiency after year one CKLA. We're at forty-two percent.
Last year.
Last year. So we had an increase this year of eighteen percent from last year. First grade, we're at forty-nine percent, adding, I'm sorry, last year at forty-five percent, this year at forty-nine percent. So we were still higher at the end of 2022 than we were the previous year. And then second grade was at forty-three percent, and they ended at forty-three percent. So that second grade year is something we've been talking about, right? There are a couple more gaps, still reeling from some COVID, impact of COVID, but we're gonna get there. Kindergarten is our base year of CKLA implementation and a lot of the Science of Reading conversations and PD that we've been having. So we're, we're excited to track them and just kind of support.
Two years ago, I toured at Newcastle Elementary, I think in the fourth grade, and I saw them implementing a program that the teachers and staff there were very happy with. Was that Hegarty?
That was CKLA.
That was CKLA.
So they were a pilot team.
Is that what the, okay.
Yes, yeah, so two years ago, we were piloting, yes.
All right, because they, from what I remember when we discussed it with them, they were like, we want this to stay. So is that what it is? It's from that success, we're now implementing it or starting kindergarten?
Yes, so our pilot consisted of K five classrooms, piloting, implementing. We actually piloted two different programs, and from the teacher feedback surveys and some data, some student data, some family input, we went with CKLA as our program moving forward, so. Yeah, our pilot friends were very excited about that.
Thank you, that's awesome. Do we have any questions?
I have one. So is it, is it reasonable, when we look at this data, particularly the minimization of the most intensive of kids? All things being equal, recognizing that they won't be, that, you know, you will gain kids from other districts, you will lose some of this cohort. But if, if first grade last year came in at fifty-three percent needing intensive, and the rising first grade, twenty-nine percent, so every year, that number should be dropping.
Closing those gaps.
Yeah, that's great.
Right out in front.
That's great.
That's our goal, and, and we are seeing that in, in small chunks, right? So we're celebrating those successes. I, I was fortunate enough to go to a professional learning opportunity just last week up in Syracuse, hear from the latest researchers, Science of Reading, people that are doing this work. We heard from the state of Mississippi, and I'm sure you've heard the Mississippi Miracle. If you've heard or read things about their literacy outcomes. And it was interesting, their take on that miracle piece, because it's not a miracle. It takes a lot of work to change the odds and the outcomes for our students. And it's been over ten years. It's been ten years, and just now, they've seen, they're seeing these jumps in these games. So something she stressed to us that are kind of in the trenches at the beginning of this, you know, adoption of HQIM and this movement, is kind of like, celebrate, celebrate the small victories and small wins and make adjustments when needed. So kind of taking that and rolling with it.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ron? Any questions?
No.
Yes, good to see you.
Robin? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Katie, Amy, Emily, thanks for coming out and sharing with us. I think it's really important that we understand what's going on in the classrooms. And I think that was a great, great explanation, great, great modeling. I do wanna retest at some point. I do feel like I was snookered into that and I didn't know what I was getting into.
You did great.
I did? I'm sure I did. All right, next up, we have a presentation, an overview from the principal of John G Leach School, Dr. Virginia Tripler. She's gonna be sharing with us the design, update on the design of the new Leach, and then kind of like, give the board the sneak peek of what's coming up for the rest of the staff at the end of the presentation, so.
Katie, can I turn this on? Am I on? Yes, no? I know, I'm good. Good evening, President PQ, Vice President Smith, Dr. Menzer, esteemed board members. It's really great to see you. And I am absolutely delighted to be here to provide you with an update on the new John G Leach School. I'm excited, I get a little overly excited, I'm gonna try to be a little bit oreo, if I'm gonna be honest. Before I show you some amazing pictures, I would like to provide you with a timeline and some context to how we achieved these designs. So I know I've got this beautiful, like, leading, going the distance, it's our theme, but you're gonna have to bear with me for about five minutes, because I want this to be meaningful for you, and I want to take you on this journey with me, because this certainly did not happen overnight.
Turn that a little bit, this angle that a little bit.
I got my tuck eye.
Turn it facing the nest a little bit.
And if you're ever in this corner, come join us. We're all one big family here, come join us, I'll take you on this journey, come on, come on over. Um, I, I know this is like amazing to say out loud, but like, this all started three years ago. And it was after DOE approved our letter of necessity. And for those that are joining us, when we submit a letter of necessity, it is us going to the state. The state has agreed to pay a hundred percent of this, so no local funds. I wanna put that out there, make sure everybody's with me on that one. And after this was done, I was charged with the task of gathering feedback from stakeholders. Really, what did this mean, what did I do at the time? I will tell you, at the John G Leach School, we are a special needs school, we are a de-setting school, and we're a very close community and family. We have kids as young as two years old that stayed at twenty-two. What I did was I put out a Google survey for months to our families. And the way, really what I found happening with that is like, families would drop something in, and then they would be like, oh yeah, and then this. And we have such a familial atmosphere. I'd be walking over and be like, hey, how are you? You put this in the survey, let's talk about more, or tell me more about that. Or if I had a family that I had a relationship with and I hadn't heard from, I'd be like, hey, what do you think about this? And I was able to really get some traction and get feedback. In addition, I did the same thing with our staff members. I put feelers out, get all their emotions out. This is where I, this is what I think, this is what I feel, who wants to join the committees? So I, I had a lot of kind of room to grow with that and get thoughts collected. This next part, I'm gonna tell you, as an educator, I was exceptionally proud of anybody that has led any PD or even taught anything, even if you taught it like something to a child, a sibling, whatnot. We had a PD day, and we had an activity, and it was an hour and a half long, and it was beautiful. It went exactly how it was supposed to go. We were able to get staff members to generate ideas, get them down on paper, kind of talk between themselves, come to a consensus, mix with the staff, I had a staff of over sixty, and then they mixed again, and then they mixed again, they came back, shared every bad ideas, and then they were forced to come up with top three priorities for the building. So it was, it went so well, and the thoughtfulness that went into it, I was like, yes, this is great. So fast forward to January of 2023. So we're not that far out, we're not, I feel like we've been on this journey for years. That was when literally I met Jade Studio, and Jade Studio is my new best friend. It is our architect, and they're absolutely amazing. Our initial meeting was with the Executive Council, Operations Division, myself, to kind of give us an idea of what is coming, what do we need to know. After that meeting, I sent them all my information, like, hey, I've been doing my homework, here's some just general information. And right after that, they said, hey Jenny, get your people together. So this is really important information for you to know. It wasn't just me, it is the power of we truly. So people that are on the committee are from all grade levels. Early childhood, elementary, upper, our STARS program. We also have our related service providers. I have representatives from all divisions, speech, PT, OT, paraprofessionals from all divisions. Heidi Heldick, our district nurse, and let me tell you, longtime employee at the John G Leach School. Jennifer Doherty, also our district coach, longtime employee of the John G Leach School, and probably one of our biggest cheerleaders, if you ever met her, she tells you she loves Leach. I also, I was tapping those parents that I was having those conversations with, and I said, hey, we're, we're doing this, I really would like you to be part of it. I was very intentional to make sure I got early childhood parents and middle school. And the reason I got middle school is by the time the school was done, they're gonna be an upper school. So these are all the people that we come together, it's roughly thirty, and sometimes it's big groups, sometimes it's small groups, and it also includes our operations division. I failed to include Ted Lambert and his crew, but they're, they're always there, and they're so, so, so supportive. So again, that's January 2023. Stick with me, it gets better. So when we met after that initial meeting, it was three groups coming together, and of the thirty people, they broke us up, mixed us up, and we just had to generate, what do you want your school to look like? What's important? It was very nebulous, get this down on paper and generate it. And then you went around, and you looked at other people's ideas, and you stole those ideas, and you came back and you told your friends. And we did this a couple different times, we met again. The next meeting, which was February, because this is tiered, February was what was called the bubble diagram and adjacency meeting. Let me tell you, there were no bubbles. They were lying to us. They're little squares, and what the squares represented was square footage. It was taking that big ideas and siphoning it down to, really, what is our new school? And what are we working with? Because we have a finite number, which was sixty-five thousand square feet. Kind of take that in for a moment. You're gonna think, man, that's a lot of square footage. Not, not as much as you may think, because you have codes, you have things that are absolutely a necessity if you're gonna have a cafeteria, you have to have this storage. I found out cafeterias have to have their own washer and dryer, like, lots of little stuff like that account for that. So that was February, March. Another thing that we had to talk about for adjacencies is the actual, like, physical space within the building. Where do you want things to be near? One thing we realized, we had a huge oversight. And this is, again, this amazing partnership with Jade. Having a conversation of, you realize you have your early childhood classroom on this side of the building and your brand new cafeteria. We've never had a cafeteria. We, in our, in our classrooms, that's one of the things about Leach, is on the other side of the building. You have the kids with the littlest legs taking the longest journey. So we had to make some changes, again, this intentionality. And in March, Jade came and visited, and I will tell you, it was just me and them, and I gave the most unusual tour of my entire life. And part of that tour was, they said, what are your challenges? What are your challenges? And I, I was quite, I was actually quite floored, because at that point, they had told us and repeatedly told us, do not build this building with the, what is wrong with your current building in mind? You need to build it with, what do you want for your students? What do your students deserve? What, what kind of programming? I'm like, okay, what's this? So they followed me around, and they said, show me all of your challenges. And I said, oh my gosh, okay, this is weird, it was uncomfortable, because normally I'm like, look at this instruction, look at this amazing things. And it was such a wonderful dialogue. I'll give you a very specific example. Anybody that walks into Leach School, and Robin can certainly attest, you lived it for many years, is that storage is a difficulty for us. And it's plain and simple, it's math. The John G Leach School was originally built for students with polio. You had this blueprint of a classroom. We have students now here that have much more greater medical challenges or medically fragile. Ten, sometimes maybe twenty years ago, these students may not have been around. So they're coming to school, they're coming to school with private duty nurses, they're coming with medical equipment. In addition, they got their wheelchairs. They also had two to three different types of equipment coming with them. It could be a ripped-in chair, it could be a stander, it could be a gate trainer. So you just follow me around, out of nowhere, they pull out a laser beam, a measuring tape, taking pictures, and literally looking for different things. What else is a problem? Like turn radiuses, sizes of the doors, getting in and out of bathrooms. Again, intentional, intentional conversations. And then I would get an email, Jenny, what about this? How about this size? Can you go and measure this? It was a constant, constant dialogue of going back and forth, back and forth. So that was in March. And then in April, they came back with the best thing ever. They came back with a blueprint design, where, because we had selected, okay, this is the model that we all agree upon, and then it was, again, looking at all the nitty-gritties. Is there doorways, is there that? It was a review that took multiple meetings, and that was in April. So I'm catching you guys up, you're catching up with me here, you're like, show me the goodness, kind of wrap this up. In May, we were working on the interior of classrooms. And for that meeting was a small group meeting, we had different, if you were an elementary teacher, you were there, middle school, every division was there, and they were charged with taking like a wish list. Go in your classroom, what works for you? Take a picture of what doesn't work for you? What do you wish you had? What are struggles? Based off of that, they came back in May with just some basic, basic visuals. And then even, we're like, nope, this works, we didn't mean this, you misunderstood what we were saying. Believe it or not, there was a very robust conversation about high-low tables, where we change kids, and having just a simple drawer under there, because that's a luxury to us. We've never had that. And they came back in September and presented us with something that you will see shortly, that kind of has virtual reality. You can actually scan the QR code, swipe through and see what we're looking at. Even based off of that, in September, we've even made more revisions. It's constantly a refinement process and communication. So I can tell you, where we are right now is we have been afforded some really cool images. And they're 2D images from a Jade Studio. And I really wanna take a moment to highlight something. It's focused on student need. Truly focused on unique student need. I'm gonna give you two precise examples, but there are so many, like countless. Everybody knows we have a pool. And we've heated pool, it's great. Needs fixing a lot, but we have a pool, and our students benefit greatly from it. Tons and tons of medical benefits. But did you also know we have students that are trached that can't get in the pool? That you, we can't risk the trached being submerged in water. So we have programming that is not accessible to all of our students, and that's problematic. Our new school, we have a splash pad, we have zero entry. Again, it's those conversations. The other tip I wanna tell you is probably the one that if you were to talk to anybody that's been on our design team, is like, most jazzed about, and they're gonna be like, wait, what? Is our, our overhead, our awning, that's gonna, you're gonna see in these pictures. We have asked, and Jade Studios would tell you that they thought that we were probably crazy asking for it. Really, our number one ask is to have an overhang for our buses to go under, all fourteen of our traditional Leach buses, to go under and be covered and safe from the elements. Heat, wind, snow, rain, because our kids deserve that. They're exposed, because if you've ever seen kids come off a bus and off of a lift, they're way up high. And no umbrella, and you're trying to pass the umbrella. It's in one way that we can actually control keeping them safe, keeping them healthy, which is critical to our programming. When we talked to Jade about that, the first thing out of their mouth, and it was just to me, was, are you kidding me? Your building's gonna be hideous. And I was just like, what are you talking? And I was just like, what are you talking about? This is, this is what we need for our kids. And they're like, no, no, most principals, they want like this beautiful facade. And I was like, talk to anybody on my, my committee, go right ahead and see what they'd say, this is really important. And I will have to give a shout out to Drew Moffett, because he was also leading the charge in this as well. He's the one that says, oh yes, yes, I totally agree. So where we are now is that we have a meeting next week, we're going to continue finalizing and revising, um, some of the information in the, the package you will receive. Know that it is outdated, but that's, I mean, that's the process. And that's really the truly, the great process, and we feel absolutely heard by Jade, there is a wonderful, wonderful partnership. And I do really want to stress this, on behalf of our Design, um, and Planning Committee, I want to express that we are absolutely, if I get emotional, just roll with me. Um, we're humbled, and we're very grateful, um, for the ability to work with the Jade Studios directly, um, to build a building specifically for our students. It is not lost on us that many other school districts would have chosen to have it handled by the Operations Division or Executive Council. And we are very grateful for your continued support, and we're really, really proud to present you these visuals. All right, I'll get it together. Oops, wrong one. First question I get is, where is our new school really? And I'm glad Beth Howe is here, because as you can see, while we're on entry, it's highlighted on my picture here, and by what we're roots. Say if you take Wrangle Hole Road, one south, one north, come to this intersection, make the left. This is not so low, it's dark. This nineteen acres is us. These are the images that Jade gave us. I mean, you'll notice in the beginning, they will be like more artsy, they're more hand drawn, and they'll become more refined. This is the main entrance of the school, one of the things that we had chosen when we were designing the school, is that we didn't want this to be facing the main road. We wanted this to be in the side for people that if they wanted to come in our school, they needed to know where they were coming. There is a front facade that looks like a school, but if you really needed to know where you're going, it's another safety aspect. Because many of our kids can't just get up and go. Again, this is that main entrance and facade as you come in. Buses will be parked underneath here, you'll see that in another visual. This is the main office and entryway. One also really cool thing that I was thrilled about, because we have four wheelchair spots in our school, and we have any more wheelchairs than four, is when you go into the parking lot, complete row of wheelchair parking for our families. Again, an overview, main entrance, viewer parking. This is an overhead of our school. You will also see that there are open spaces and areas, there are three courtyard areas, and those do not go against our square foot, um, square feet or sixty-five thousand square feet. We do have some plans, I will tell you, again, they're not completely written in stone, but some ideas and some plans. We do want to develop some partnerships with, um, our community and local businesses, so if you have suggestions or connections, I've been talking with Gabe, we are absolutely open. Um, this particular area, we want to have an adapted, um, greenhouse, we want to partner with William Penn, and we also want to have a memorial garden for, um, students that have passed. Um, over here, our early childhood division will be very close, it will mirror, um, what we have, um, in our courtyard area, which is some more updated, uh, equipment. And in this back, big, beautiful area, it is going to be kind of a mixture of some activities for Star students and traditionally, traditional Leach students with also, uh, nature aesthetic. I love this picture. Fourteen Leach buses, it's all covered. On the other side of the building, we also have, um, parking for our, um, our Stars program, for, and a Stars entrance for our students, because I would say ninety-eight percent of our Star students are ambulatory, and they can just hop in on that, on entrance as well.
Is that, is that covered?
No, it is not covered. Again, this is an overhead, the main road is here. Buses would come in this way, I apologize if your backs come in, buses would come in this way, loop around, and it's a two-tiered system. And even over here, there's additional parking, and this back here is an adaptive walk, walking area and trail. The adaptive playground has not been addressed yet, I know people are saying, where's the playground? We haven't gotten there yet, everything's been done in chunks. If I'm moving too quickly, just stopping. Oh, I love this one. This is really cool. This is the side view of our pool. Uh, one of the things that we wanted to bring in is as much nature as we possibly could, there's been a lot of conversations on the type of glass, and the amount of light that we need to, um, let into the pool area, because we do have this significant population of students, um, with visual impairment. So have to be very mindful of that as well. This is what the, you would see if you were driving parallel with the road. And this is a side entrance, and this is, uh, entrance to our Star Hub or our Star Programming, where we have some different rooms planned specifically for activ, activities of daily living, including, uh, a pool kitchenette area for just our Star students. Main entrance. Um, one fun fact, I'm really proud of it, um, Leach P T A has agreed, when you walk in, I'll be sitting there, um, but behind me, there's going to be a large, um, aquarium, and it's going to start at the floor and go to here, so our kids can wheel right on up to it, press their faces up against it, and get as close as they want, and have that experience as much as they want. Because accessibility is a big issue in a lot of places. Again, another side view of the pool. This is our adaptive walking area. Believe it or not, this has been changed slightly, um, it's actually been made larger. Um, one of the things and the conversations that we had with our physical therapist is to provide an area that will be multifaceted with multi loops for whatever our kids may need. Because one of the best ways that we can keep our students healthy is get them up and moving, and it's many times, um, ingrained in their programming, because we do have our multidisciplinary teams, and that services are part of the instruction that we do. Again, another picture with buses. This is our pool, this is our only colored picture that gave us. Um, this is amazing. These are our changing areas. This is a lift. This is a splash pad where our kids with traches can now access the pool, zero entry. This is the same size as what we currently have at the John G Leach School. It's not going to be going above four feet, this is again, more on that therapeutic side. And design with our students in mind. And all the hard questions go to Emily Falcon.
So, um, I'm just going to briefly give you guys a little bit of information about the timeline and next steps to expect for this project. Um, obviously, the design team over at Leach is going to continue to meet with Studio Jade to finalize this design. Um, in January, the Governor will release his bond bill, that will have a recommendation for how much funding we are going to get for, uh, construction in FY twenty-five. February, we'll bring the final designs back to the Board for review. And then, right now, Studio Jade is telling us that they plan to be ready to go with their bid package for, um, April to May, which lines us up perfectly for, um, our funding in FY twenty-five. We would go out to bid at that point in time and be ready to accept bids and get construction going, um, at some point after July, when the final appropriation is made from the FY twenty-five bond bill. Questions from the Board on anything that me or Jenny have presented?
You haven't had any contractors, I should say, Studio Jade, did you have any input from any contractors on any other value engineering items and constructability?
I couldn't think of somebody's names. Um, Scott is a Colonial employee, and he was hired to help, um, specifically with projects, and that is one of his strengths. Um, and he will tell us straight up, this is not per code, we want to go this way so that we can make, ensure that we are tapping into all the different funds. I know that there's also been conversations Ted has brought up, again, nothing is written in stone, it's been a lot of investigation and working with Jade. Um, there's been solar panels, all sorts of different things, especially if we're going to have, I don't have the overhang anymore up there. We're going to have such a large overhang of how we can, um, really, I don't want to say monopolize, but really benefit from some of the design choices that we're making, so there, there are multiple people that are part of that. Um, Jade has been very forward in that as well, but I would say, if I had to take my hat off to anybody, it's Scott, because he's repeatedly the one that comes to the table and say, hey, let's really think about this.
There's programs out there from a solar perspective, that you should be able to jump onto the road and get some of that promise, nothing. Nothing's free, of course, but there would be, there are some programs out there to, to get some of that, and Studio Jade should be well aware of this.
Um, so we are definitely looking at, at that. Um, because this is a hundred percent state funded, um, we're, we're looking at every opportunity to make, to maximize the, the spaces and the funding that we are going to receive. Um, but in some cases, when the, the opportunities are limited, um, like there's certain grants and so forth, we have had conversations about, you know, do we, do we want to maximize those in areas where there's a local contribution, and the state is not footing the bill for the entire project? So that does add somewhat into the calculation when we're having those conversations. Um, not risking anything at all for the benefit of Leach students and, you know, the maximum efficiency of the building.
Right, does the state have any purchasing, any special purchasing programs we have to follow? Purchasing agreements with, with what's not, you're not sure yet?
Um, we will make sure that we are following all of the, the current guidelines and regulations around procurement, et cetera. I'm not aware of anything in particular, um, that we would be running into with this, uh, that's outside the norm, but, um, but we will make sure that we are aware of all that stuff as we move forward.
Thanks, Jenny. Next up, we have our Student School Board Representative Report, Adriana have an update for us.
Hi, guys. I'll try and keep it short tonight, because I have homework. Since I'm wrapping it, William Penn Field Hockey won our Coach Me a Kenny dedication game in overtime to bring anyone. We tied yesterday to Conrad, and we will be facing Odessa tomorrow. Uh, soccer went up against Odessa today, I haven't found out who won yet, but fingers crossed it's us. Volleyball plays Middletown tomorrow, Cross Country has a try-me tomorrow as well, and football had an amazing field dedication and homecoming game on Saturday. Uh, also, this coming Saturday, March and Ben has their first competition coming up of the season. Um, Senior Class Committee voting opened up on Monday, so remember, I have to plug in one last time, vote Adrian Hutton for Senior Class President. Homecoming went amazing, we had so much fun, and a huge shout out to everybody who won royalty. Spirit Week, like, an astonishing amount of participation, it was definitely one of our best spirit weeks. Um, everybody was just so excited, and they just dressed up so cute, and it was so much fun. Um, the junior and senior classes also had a pep rally the day before homecoming, and it was so amazing. Um, I don't know if you guys saw the Instagram pictures that Gabe posted, but we even had percussion members doing jig two upside down, which was just so impressive, I could never do that, actually, but it was very cool, you guys have to check that out. Uh, Student Council was extremely successful with homecoming setup and cleanup, and we're looking forward to more activities and charity events and stuff of that nature. Uh, obviously, F F A is going great. Uh, remember to buy your pumpkins from them, reach out to Ms. Hawkins. And Penn News is releasing videos every A and B Day, so make sure you're on the lookout for any updates that I miss here. Uh, finally, Penn periods are starting soon. They are, this new thing we're inducing in place of homeroom, they're worth a fourth of a credit, and I'm just interested to see how that will go out, because I know a lot of students don't want more work. But they're fun, they're supposed to be cool, I know I'm interested in the true crime Penn period, so I'm just excited to see how that's going to go. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Adriana. Like she said, it's a period where students are supposed to go have a little bit of fun for a quarter of their credit and learn some. Adriana's like, learn about true crime, it's like an activity period.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the next agenda item under action, uh, Updates and Action Items, is School Lane Pathway Easement. Um, I'd like to get the Board's, uh, advanced permission to sign, to sign off on any easement document we get regarding the school lane pathway that's going in behind William Penn. There is a project that's been longstanding, this has been in the works for a while, they're finally getting to this phase of the Penn Farm, historic Penn Farm renovation or upgrade, where there's going to be a walking trail around the perimeter of the farm, uh, that encompasses school lane, which is in the easement between William Penn and the farm. Part of their process of getting that approved is they needed an easement signed by the Board President, but in the same vein, they need the Board approval for Chris to sign off on the easement. We were hoping to have that, but there's, we are continuing to engage with them around the specificity of that, uh, making sure that whatever we, is in that easement is to our benefit as much as it is to theirs. Um, and so that's not being brought forward, but we are seeking the Board's advanced approval, that once we get an easement to our liking, uh, we would like to see, we would ask the Board to grant us permission to move forward with acting on it. Ms. Falcon, is there anything I'm missing in that statement?
Just want to clarify that the, um, we may in fact, um, accept written confirmation of some of the clarifications that we've asked for. Don't necessarily have to be built into the, uh, easement or purchase documents that we'll be putting forward, um, but we are seeking written confirmation from Dell Dot in how they're going to proceed with the project before we move forward with, um, asking for signatures.
I'll take any questions or any other.
Any liability issues, Jim?
No.
You're going to be, this is going, if I remember correctly, where you explained it to me a couple of weeks ago, is this is going to be adjacent to the area to where the, where the, uh, Penn Farms has their vegetables and all that?
It's going to be literally the, the road that runs between the properties, the old school lane that's grown over. It's the access road for the Artisan, I believe the watershed behind the school, uh, from the Penn Acres side. Uh, but it's just literally, it runs from two seventy-three all the way straight up to the old, uh, Home Depot, where Home Depot is right up there on that street. It's just that, that's what they're, they're seeking easement for.
On my conversion to.
Yeah. Who will be able to access this?
Uh, it'll be right from the, from the walkway that's currently out of Newcastle, right up into Penn Farm.
So anybody, community access?
Yes, it's a community access.
Or anybody, anybody with, uh, with a vehicle can drive?
No, we'll be able to drive, be, be a walk, bicycling or walking.
Thank you. Or that, or that bike path.
Yeah.
Extension.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Law, did you make a motion?
Yes.
You did? I'm looking for a second, there we are. All right, um, I have a motion by Mr. Law, second by Mrs. Smith. Uh, do I have any other questions or comments from the Board? Nope. All right, uh, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right. Motion's passed.
Next up, we have, um, Dr. Cooper's going to share some information around school-based wellness centers, uh, in Colonial, and then he's also going to, we're presenting in front of the Board, uh, an, an approval for us to offer reproductive, uh, service, reproductive health services at our middle school wellness center. Dr. Cooper will share, uh, that information.
Uh, good evening, Board members, um, I will be brief as well, Ms. Hutton has homework to do, and I have to get home and yell at my kids, so they do their homework. I'm here before you to talk about a couple of things tonight, and these are attachments that are in the public, uh, publicly accessible, publicly accessible part of Board docs, and Board members have them as well. There's two attachments that you, that are relevant to this, um, discussion. The one is a two-sided thing that talks about, um, tiered services that we have at our wellness centers, and the other is just, kind of just incidental, but a nice plug. We got, um, for the October edition of the American School Board Journal, we got on the cover, uh, a cover story about our elementary wellness center program. And we're very proud of that, and I hope as school, school board members, uh, you can take that in as well. It's, it's, we are truly nationally recognized in this area. So with regards to the, uh, wellness centers, first thing I'd like to share with you is that we do have a continuum, continuum of supports in Colonial. We've had high school. Colonial. We've had high school wellness centers in the state of Delaware since 1985. First one was at Middletown High School. Our outgoing Senator Carper was an early opponent of this. We've had a wellness center at William Penn High School for probably over thirty years. As all of you know from our presentations in the past, around eight years ago, we started wellness centers in our elementary schools. And now I'm proud to say, along with a partnership from Nemours, we have a, our hub wellness center, Eisenberg, and we have spoke wellness center sites in all of our eight elementary schools in Colonial. People have said for some time, what about middle school? You got them in the elementary, you have them in the high school, where's middle school? Fortunately, through a partnership with grant money provided by Newcastle County Council, that we applied for a grant, School Based Health Alliance, and they provided a grant for a startup, two years' worth of startup money for a wellness center at McCullough Middle School. We went through a public bid process, and I say we, Colonial School District was involved in this. The agent of the grant was actually the Delaware School Based Health Alliance. So the School Based Health Alliance put out an RFP process. We had multiple healthcare partners apply, and Colonial selected Nemours. So what you see before you in this document is that we have Nemours at the elementary level, Nemours at the middle school, and our high school provider is Christiana Care. The next thing I'd like to talk about on this continuum of services, as Dr. Mens, Dr. Mensor mentioned, is that you'll see for some time now at our high school wellness center, that the Christiana Care providers do provide reproductive health services. It's important for folks to know that this is based on parent consent. So for all of the wellness centers, unless a student's eighteen, when they can consent themselves, the parents register on the wellness center enrollment packets. There's a section for what parents can accept or decline. So there's a section on there for all of the services they offer, which are listed on this sheet. What we're here to talk to you about tonight is that as we open the middle school wellness centers, one of the adolescent health services that Nemours, that Christiana Care, that pediatricians provide for adolescents is reproductive health services. So the state of Delaware has a requirement that the only way that school-based health centers can provide this in a given district is with board approval. So that's why I'm here to talk about that. On this side of the sheet, there is a discussion or really language about the services that they provide. And also, it's highlighted that it is by parent permission only. And I think that's really important, and I think it's reasonable for people to wonder about that and to make sure that any services that are provided are provided with parent consent. I will note that outside of the school district, parent consent is not required. In the state of Delaware, you can, as long as you're twelve years old, you can get reproductive health services in the community without parent consent. That's the standard in the state. That's the standard in the community. We're doing something different in our wellness centers. We are requiring parent consent for those services. So at this point, I'll just, that's what I have to share. I'll take any questions, any direction from Dr. Mensor. I'm here to ask, answer any questions you may have.
And just to clarify, as John, Dr. Cooper said, we're seeking the services on the front of the page are what's being offered and is gonna happen, it's moving forward. What we're seeking is to add those services that are on the back of that page to the front, so that we can offer that to the families in the McCullough community. And that's what the motion is for.
So I am available for any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? So will the parents be made clear, especially you talked about reproductive services, will parents be made clear about confidentiality if their students accessing these services?
So I wanna make sure I understand your question. So when you say, will the parents be made aware of the confidentiality, I wanna, I think I know what you mean, but I wanna be clear about what you mean.
Yeah, well, they understand. When students, so when students are accessing these services for reproductive services.
Yes.
Are parents made very clear that they don't have to know? They, they won't be told?
Correct. So that's an important, I believe it's, it is noted here, actually, on the back. So what, what you mean, in case folks don't get this, what Dr. Dorsey's referring to is that in order to be provided the services, the students have to have the parent permission. That permission can be revoked at any time. Once the permission is granted, if a given, if a given student accesses the services on a Tuesday, the wellness center is not gonna contact the parent and say, your child came in here and got this service on Tuesday. That's, that's accurate.
Just making sure that they understand what they're signing off on.
So we also have, and you certainly provide this, Dr. Woodall, go ahead, look like you wanna say something.
So Mary Kelly, Nemours has started kind of providing us with grant language for what that enrollment packet will look like, and as part of that enrollment packet, they are clearly letting families know that, of that confidentiality, that beginning, beginning at age twelve, you are consenting for those services, but they're not calling you at every single appointment through all of that.
I was gonna make sure that the parents understand that, if they're signing off on it.
It is important.
Absolutely.
I mean, cuz when parents are having these conversations with their children, they still wanna be in the know, but they don't understand, in this situation, you may not be in the know.
Correct. We also do have copies of all of the enrollment registration packets, if you'd like to take a look at them. Most of them are actually online, but we have paper copies as well. We'd be glad to show you.
Mr. Law?
So if parents, I just wanna make sure I'm hearing this right.
Sure.
Parents agree to the services?
Yes.
And that's the end of the parents involved from there?
That's correct. In terms of the wellness center notification, that is correct.
But doesn't mean they don't, they, doesn't have to mean that they're not part of any conversations that the students, I mean, they're involved in, if it's a case that the family's involved, cuz one of the options is family, does include family.
I'll give, I'll give you an example. The, we've been working with these providers for a long time. They want the families to be involved. Especially in sensitive topics like this, when students come in, the healthcare providers will honor their confidentiality. However, at the same time, they recognize that these children live with families, and so they will work with them to say, okay, we will honor your confidentiality, but we really probably should be talking to mom and dad about this. What can we do to help you feel comfortable to have that conversation? They won't force it, but they recognize that things are always, almost always gonna have a better outcome if the family's involved.
I guess, I'm lost in the fact that number one is that we have students out there that have their parents, their parent.
Correct.
Okay, guardians, whichever.
Yes.
And we don't have to let them know that they're making a life, a possible life-changing decision.
So I think there's two parts to that. So as I mentioned before, that is the standard in the state of Delaware, period. So for example, if a child were to go to a physician in the community, and they're twelve years old, that's it. They have a conversation with the physician. The physician, by Delaware law, provides them with the service. So that's, that's the standard in the state.
But do they, but do they have to go and notify the parents?
No, no, that's the whole point. It's, it's a, I will tell you, it's, it's, I think a lot of people don't know this, frankly, because most informed consent is eighteen. The difference with this is that informed consent is twelve for reproductive health services. For services for substance abuse, it's fourteen. So if you're fourteen, you can get substance abuse services in the community. The fourteen-year-old can ask for them, and they don't need parent consent. We actually, to, to your point, we have a higher standard of parent consent in this program than the state requires in the community.
Well, yes and no. Yes, the fact that we're getting their permission to talk to the kids about it, possibly giving it to them, but no, the fact that we're not telling the parents about it.
Well, to be clear, in the community, they don't need permission, and they don't tell. So what we're saying is we need permission.
But unfortunately, we're not the state representatives. We're the school board representatives.
Correct. And I, I, I don't know if this is part of your question, but the quest, the, the services that are provided are, are specifically listed on here. So they are not providing termination of pregnancy. That is not what this is about. That is not a service that is offered.
Can you read them?
I'll read them, yeah. So, I mean, you have them, but I'll read them as well. So it's diagnosis and treatment of sexually transmitted diseases, reproductive health, provision of contraceptives, HIV testing and counseling, and that's it. And family planning, which is conversations around the idea of having a family. So again, the services are diagnosis and treatment of STDs, reproductive health, provision of contraceptives, HIV testing and counseling. That's, those are the services, and I do think it's important to know that specific.
Well, you're specifically asking for, for our position or our permission to be able to go for the, for the birth control, those things for our clothes?
That's, that's, just those services.
Just those services.
There's no surgery, there's no surgical procedures.
Understand, but, but all of those, all of those services you just read over are all in that one captive group.
So parents can actually, go ahead, Dr. Woodall, cuz it's a good question, and we have an answer that's specific to that.
So the way that Nemours is proposing to break that out is they, on this enrollment form, is they are listing each and every service, so that the families can say, I elect this one, I don't elect this one, I don't want this, I want this one. So they can pick and choose from that full menu whether they want one, whether they want two, whether they want all, whether they want none. They'll make a selection as to this is what I do want, and then they are going back and signing, yes, I agree, for my student to receive reproductive health services, and they're signing off on that.
But are they also asking too, for the parents that are underage, okay, underage of eighteen typically, right? Are they asking that, I wanna be notified or I don't wanna be notified?
So on that enrollment form, it specifically notifies, it doesn't ask whether they can be, whether they will be notified or not. It states the policy, you know, the requirement that we have, that once you consent to those services, families will not be notified of that appointment or of that service. So they're acknowledging that as part of that enrollment packet.
Will they be notified if they're given the prescription?
I don't...
I believe so.
Yeah.
I mean, even if they get something from their insurance, it's not gonna tell them what it is. It just tells them that there was a charge to your insurance. You don't even get that information.
But what if that parent were to come to, come to the wellness center? I, I wanna know what you gave my son or daughter.
Well, I think it'd be, I mean, first of all, ideally, we wouldn't get to that situation because of the things I mentioned. I think sometimes there's a feeling that healthcare providers or even some of these folks are, are encouraging the kids not to talk to their families. I can tell you from talking to them, they want to involve the families. But to your specific point, if a parent came in and they asked to see their child's medical records, I think we would have to figure out what to do, to be quite honest, because the medical records that the healthcare services maintain are covered by HIPAA, whereas our records that we have for students are covered by FERPA. We probably would end up talking to the hospital, because it actually would be the hospital's policy on that. We would want, I guess I just wanna reassure you, we don't want to hide this. It is not our intent to prevent parents from being involved in their children's lives. Our intent here is to provide access with parent permission to a service, that if they choose it, they're being informed. If you say yes to contraceptives, what that means is, if your student asks for contraceptives a month from now, we're going to give them to them, we're gonna give them to the, we're going to give them to the student, and we're not gonna tell you. But it's said right here, that's what it's gonna be. If a parent has a concern about that, presumably, they wouldn't sign it. And the consent can be revoked at any time.
But a parent paying for it?
Well, the way that the health, the way that the wellness centers work are that, this is a, and this is a federal thing, and certainly in the state of Delaware as well, the wellness centers, they're forbidden from collecting a copay. So whereas you and I, if we're fortunate to have insurance, which I am, I go to the doctor, I pay the thirty-dollar copay, emergency room, two hundred dollars, and then I get my service. With regards to services provided by school-based wellness centers, there is no cash exchanged. Parents do submit their insurance information, and their insurance would be charged for that, as Dr. Mensor mentioned. The parents get an explanation of benefits indicating that this service was performed. If a student does not have insurance, if a student has insurance that will not pay for a particular service, their benefits maxed out, the wellness centers provide the service anyway. They provide the services without regard to the ability of the family to pay, but if the family has insurance or Medicaid, it will be billed.
So if the parent gets a bill for a prescription or something, they could ask the school, and they would say what?
Well, so the, the, it's a, it's a good question. It's an interesting question, because it's really, this represents a partnership between the school district and the providers.
Right.
But the actual providers, their, their kind of privacy guidelines are bound by the privacies of, of Nemours, or it would be no different than if a thirteen-year-old child went to a Nemours clinic, like, say, where my kids go in Pike Creek, and they said, I want reproductive health services. They provide those services to the child, and then the parent comes a week later and says, I, I wanna know what you did. They would presumably handle that according to their, whatever their policies are. The school wouldn't be involved in that conversation.
The school wouldn't be the person that's paying for that?
The school would be talking to the healthcare provider.
Would that be the same situation here?
It's, it's, yes, that's, that's the stuff.
So we don't, so we don't know the answer to that question is, would they, or would they not give that parent that information?
I can get the answer to that question. I think that, you know, it's, it's evident with educational information that the parent has a right to request that information. I think it's probably in our state regulations somewhere, but I don't wanna misspeak.
Right. Well, that, that being said, until we know the answer, I make a motion, we table this until next month.
I have another question.
Sure.
If the parent gets a bill and he asks the school or the healthcare provider...
Point of order, there's a motion on the floor.
Motion to table, another question. Is he asking, yes, maybe?
Okay. What is the motion?
To table it until next month, until you get, till, till we get the information on what the policy is from the, from the hospital, if a parent were to go and ask what services were given to their student without their knowledge. What's that policy?
Has the motion been seconded?
Yes.
I second it.
Aye.
I second it.
You could do it, but who's vote first, or if you don't feel that you have enough of it, then you can ask whoever's.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, say nay.
Nay.
All right. The motion's carried. It's tabled until next month with more information.
Can I ask you a question, Jonathan?
I'm willing to answer a question, sure.
The question was, I had two questions. One was, the parent gets the bill, and he asks the school or the healthcare provider, and they answer, or they don't answer. But the parent could also ask the child, what's this for, right?
Of course. Certainly, we would, I would...
Agreed, agreed. The fact of the matter is, I'm not gonna feel comfortable making a motion either way, yes or no, on this, until we know that information. But as a parent, I wanna know what my child receives. And if that child's underage, I should be able to go to whoever and say, I wanna know what you gave my child.
I agree.
That's, that's, that's my right as a parent. Now, all those ages that were floating around here, fourteen, twelve, and all that kinda good stuff, they're gonna, I'd have killed my daughter. But, but it's just saying, is, you know, that's, all those have changed so frequently here recently, that we need to know what those rights of the parents, it really comes down, what's the rights of the parents to know what their child's doing?
So...
Their child, they're not necessarily ours or the medical.
But state stat, state statute, I, I've dealt with this. State statute, a lot of times allows for children to get services, but if the parents don't.
But what if the parent asks?
Anyhow, you, you got a motion that's passed, you really want?
Right. If the parent asks, is there a statute like that?
They don't have to pay.
Dr. Cooper?
Yes.
For follow-up, please.
Mm-hmm.
I would like, the next time you come to talk about this, to provide some information about the teen pregnancy rate in Delaware, perhaps even the surrounding states.
Yes.
And anything that you might be able to find that correlates with school-based health centers and the reduction of unwanted pregnancies.
Absolutely. Be glad to.
Also, what STIs also?
Glad to.
And SDIs, thank you.
Be glad to.
Thank you. Cool. All right. Moving on to the next item, and it's field trips. Moving on to field trips. All right, Dr. Mensor, tell us about some field trips.
We just have two trips for the board's consideration for action and approval. There are one trip for senior class twenty twenty-five to Greece in spring break of April of twenty twenty-five, and then the William Penn Choir heading to Williams Bush Gardens for their spring competition in May of twenty twenty-four.
Okay. We're gonna be voting on these separately?
Yes.
For each motion. So we'll start with the senior class of twenty twenty-five spring break trip to Greece from April eighteenth to twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Dr. Dorsey. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Smith. All right. Second by Mrs. Smith. All right. Um, and all those in favor, or are there any questions or comments?
What's, what's the plan if the, uh, conditions, uh, remain the same as they are today? If, uh, if any conflicts or anything like that, what's the, what's the plan to address that?
Same as it usually is. The parents will understand the risk of the trip not moving forward due to concerns. They're often sometimes given alternative locations.
Is that, is that all information that's been provided to them?
Ms. Falcon and I are engaged with the ship, trip chaperones now and reviewing all the different paperworks to move forward. They haven't even, this is really only at the interest-based, interest level now. They've signed an agreement that they're in. There's been nothing. No transactions have occurred, nothing has been distributed or paperwork. It's, it's still will be the same process that we've used in the past with the families. So yes, it will be part of the conversation.
Any other questions from the board?
Any more, Miss Law?
No. All right. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right. Motion's passed for that one. And then moving over to the other field trip to Busch Gardens, uh, for the William Penn Concert Choir trip. Music in the Park Competition from May seventeenth and nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Williamsburg, Virginia. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
All right. Moved by Mr. Handy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carlson. Any questions or comments from the board? All right. All those in favor, please signify with saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right. Motion's carried. Both field trips are approved.
The next item is we're seeking the board's, uh, permission to begin our waiver, waiver process for, uh, admin code ones seventeen oh four, seventeen oh five A and seventeen twenty-six that allow us to waive funds for those, um, those lines. At this time of the year, we're gonna, we're asking the board's permission now to post public meeting notice in the News Journal for two consecutive weeks so we can have feedback by the end of October and put in front of the board, uh, approval for those waivers. But this is not, you're not voting on the waiver now, you're just voting on our ability to post for public comment.
So moved.
All right. And do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of moving, uh, to approve to give the administration permission to post the waivers of provision of fourteen Delaware admin code one seven oh four nine eight, uh, of the unit, or ninety-eight percent of the unit, I read that wrong, sorry. Seventeen oh five A, class size, and seventeen twenty-six opportunity fund waivers. Two consecutive weeks in News Journal for public comment. Um, do I have any questions or comments by the board? All those in favor, please signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, say nay. Motion's approved. All right.
In the last, um, item of consideration, we asked it, we're seeking the board's consideration and action upon an, uh, an intent to terminate employee number twenty-four one oh one as recommended by the administration.
Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second? Moved by Mrs. Smith, second by Mr. Lawes. Do I have any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, say, signify with aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Motion's approved. All right. DSBA updates. Um, do we have any updates from the, uh, the state board? Who attended the state board meeting? Was that you, Ms. Smith?
No.
State board?
Or the, I'm sorry, the, uh, the SBA committee?
No.
Okay.
No.
Sorry. No, you're fine. Um, and then, and then looking at legislative, uh, Mr. Carlson?
Yes, uh, the Legislative Committee met and, uh, John Marinucci is retired and he's been replaced by the, uh, David Toll, who was the, uh, chair. And his position of chair has been replaced by Matt Booker, who was, is a, a member of the Milford School Board. They discussed the one hundred fifty-second General Assembly, which goes two years. So whenever the House and Senate bills for the last two years, the ones that have been signed and those that are still in committee. And, um, there was a conversation about, uh, the Legislative Committee updates, uh, and legislative priorities. And legislative priorities were approved. Uh, there was also a discussion about the, um, teacher and staff shortages, local authority, major and minor capital improvement process, uh, and funding. Also, uh, there was a discussion about, uh, districts losing teachers because of the practice test the teachers are required to take and, uh, what a district's gonna do, uh, when S R funds are gone. Other than that, it was very productive and well-attended.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to, um, items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. And with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay.
Nay.